I'm glad he's on time. Hey, I'm glad you're on time, bro. Because for other cities, super early. Uh, it's the Santa Fe Springs. Santa Fe Springs, like, who are you guys?
I'd like to call a regular meeting in the Housing Successors, Successor Agency and City Council order. Roll call please.
Councilmember Mora is not here. Councilmember Martin?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Mayor Protim Zamora?
Here.
The mayor rounds. Here. Public comments are now open. The public may address the city council on closed session items only. For those that are here to make a public comment, you'll have an opportunity once the city clerk announces your name. You'll have three minutes to speak. City clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak?
No speakers today, mayor.
Public comments are now closed. Closed session. I'd like to call upon the city attorney to read the closed session items.
Thank you, mayor. Ma'am, to the city council, at this time, the city council will recess in the closed session to discuss the single item on tonight's closed session agenda. I will also note for the record that council member Mora is not present. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now recess to closed session. We reconvene the meeting after the closed session discussion to hear a report from the city attorney and to continue with the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to reconvene the meetings. City Attorney, is there any closed session to report?
There is, Mayor. With respect to the sole item on tonight's closed session agenda, the records reflect that the City Council recessed in the closed session. All members were present for the discussion of this item. The City Council received a report from the City Manager. Feedback was provided by the City Council, but no final action was taken in closed session. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now continue the regular meeting. I'd like to call upon Cindy Jarvis to lead us in today's invocation.
I'm Cindy Jarvis, Principal at Santa Fe Springs Christian School, and I'm honored to lead your invocation today. Let's read from the Book of Romans. "Rejoice in hope; be patient in tribulation; be constant in prayer." Romans 12:12. Patience is a virtue. That's one of the most popular sayings of all time. God's Word talks about patience over 100 times in the Bible. That tells us it's a topic He wants us to soak on. As we look for ways to practice patience, let's share His love to those who need it most. Sometimes patience to listen and not respond and be present is a lesson many of us can learn from. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we give thanks for all You teach us. Help us to seek ways to show patience to those around us. We pray ahead Your protection around those here who serve our community. Be with us tonight as we work together for our city. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Cindy. At this time, I'd like to call on Councilmember Rodriguez to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please put your hand over your heart, ready to begin.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Annette. I'd like to introduce the following representative from the Chamber of Commerce, CEO John Wilson. And also from the Little Lake School District, we have Board Clerk Hilda Zamora. Presentations: Recognition of Back-to-School Backpack Program Donors. I'd like to call upon Community Services Manager Ed Ramirez.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, members of the audience. The Community Services Department hosted its annual backpack program on August 6th at the Gus's Philoscho neighborhood center, where we supported families and youth in preparing them for the new school year. To welcome families, Community Services served snow cones, popcorn, all while the Santa Fe Springs Rotary Club was assisting distributing backpacks and, of course, as well as you yourselves. Beyond 21st Century Beauty School generously provided complimentary haircuts and festive tinselled hairstyles, and families were also able to select clothing and shoes from the community closet. Thanks to the generosity of businesses, residents, and community partners, the event raised $5,320 in monetary and in-kind donations. Contributions included a wide range of school supplies, pens, pencils, markers, notebooks, highlighters, you name it, everything you need for school. What also was included was $25 gift cards that also was provided to the students to help with any of their needs. On the day of the event, 98 backpacks were provided, yet we provided a total of 116 backpacks thereafter. Mr. Mayor, this evening, I'm requesting yourself as well as Council to recognize our generous donors without whom this event would not be made possible. Their contributions provided joy and excitement to the local children, and they prepared for their successful year. At this time, I'll call forward our donors. We'll call them all together and take a group photo as I pass out their certificate.
Perfect.
All right. So we'll start off with Associated Packaging Incorporated. We have Beyond 21st Century Beauty and Academy. We have CL Consulting Incorporated. We have Echo Wise Incorporated. We have Lorna Terrell. We have the Norwalk Santa Fe Springs Rotary Club. Collins Aerospace. The Santa Fe Springs Women's Club. We have the Santa Fe Springs Firefighters Local 3507. We have the Santa Fe Springs Employee Association. Universal Waste Systems. We have Yoko and Paul Nakamura. I believe that is everyone. Did I miss anybody?
On behalf of the City Council, we all appreciate everything that you've done to make this such a successful program. And without you, it and without you, it wouldn't have happened. So, thank you, thank you, thank you all of you.
Sure. Just to let you guys know, some of you guys, it's great because not only do you guys even help out with the city of Santa Fe Springs when we do our backpack giveaway, but some of you guys even help out Little Lake City School District by also donating there. So, you know, kudos to that. So, thank you for all the support you give. When it came to the hairstyling, the haircuts, you could just see the kids, you know, thrilled, boys and girls, because some of them weren't really ready for school, or, you know, parents were asking, like, you know, hey, I didn't know if I could cover the cost, because of course, when you get a haircut nowadays, you know, for men, it's what, $30, $35, $40? And then, you know, for ladies, I think it's a little more. So, it's great that you guys have that program. So, and not only that, everybody else, you know, CL Consulting and every other group. Universal Waste, thank you for all that you guys do, and every other person that came and always helps out these kids, because, you know, what they have in that backpack, it really, you should see them at school. You know, when you see those kids, everybody has that special backpack that, you know, parents probably spent like $100, $120 on a backpack. But you know, when you see our backpacks that we give away, it's all uniform, same color, either blue or black, you know, maybe a gray in there, and these kids are just proud, you know, just carrying it around. So, it's a great thing, it's a blessing. So, thank you, and may God always bless your business, too.
Of course.
I'd like to say thank you, too, to everybody that participated in the backpack program, the volunteers, everybody that gave up their time, their money, the haircuts, because some of these kids don't have a lot, as Mayor Protem Zamora said. They don't have a lot, and when they open that backpack and see what's in there, it is great. It's a great feeling. And when they get that haircut, they feel empowered. And when I was in Seroptimus, we had the back-to-school shopping sprees. And we love to volunteer, but just think of what it does for the children to give them new clothes and to give them, you know, the opportunity to just be successful. I think that the backpack program makes them feel more successful, and it empowers them. And I just want to say that that is like the greatest gift of all that you can do, and just thank you so much. It's so inspiring, and that's what we need. We need more of that. Thank you to everybody that gave that to these kids. Thank you.
Next, we have the Santa Fe Springs Refresh by the Creative. I would like to call upon Joe Hoven Orozco from We the Creative.
Hi, my name is Joe Venarozco, President and Chief Creative Officer for We the Creative. Thank you for this opportunity, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and members of the audience. Just a little overview, my company's been fortunate to win the bid to work on the brand refresh for the city of Santa Fe Springs. And there's four phases in regards to the brand refresh. It's a discovery, which is the first part. Design is all the exploration and fun and collaborating with city staff. And then, development is refining those ideas, and delivery is making sure it's on time and on budget. So, right now, it's a presentation of where we are at this point, which is the discovery portion of it. And what we usually do is have three slides. It's what we did, and I'll walk you through this part right here. So, what we did with the community and staff engagement, we surveyed over 200 responses from residents and businesses and staff. We conducted interviews with department leaders. We conducted outreach at the library here, and also at the July 3rd concert. We actually ran into Mr. Mayor there. Audited the city communications and branding materials, everything from print and online. And then, we did a comparative review of peer cities, Norwalk, Whittier, Downey, all the local cities within the area. Also, cities that had the same makeup, primarily industrial. What we heard from the surveys and all the various people, key themes from the community, residents love the city events. I think that was a clear differentiator between the surrounding cities. Cleanliness and strong services was really, we heard a lot from a lot of the residents. Santa Fe Springs is described as friendly, family-first, and safe. City pride is high, but the branding didn't really reflect it, and that's what we're going to try to help with. The city is seen as small but mighty, overlooked due to its industrial perception. The desire here is for a brand that's more modern, warm, and unified. What we recommend, next steps for the brand, reposition Santa Fe Springs as more than industrial, a vibrant city where people grow and belong. Our goal here is to start working and developing a new logo, a new tagline, and messaging platform rooted in community pride. Our goal is to build a unified visual language or identity across all departments. So, some sort of a hierarchy system for the different departments, and also look and feel. Our goal is as well to promote the city regionally through storytelling and design and outreach. So, that's pretty much it where we are at this moment. Our next steps are to develop the logo and the tagline and the visual language for the brand refresh. Can open up for questions, or we can end there, just to give you an update.
Renee, are we also going to ask, since we were talking about like the big five, maybe they can also model to see some of their branding over there in those areas?
They have seen Vernon's brand, which we've highlighted that we really like. But I think we're going to see some logos next week, so we'll start.
City of Industry, what is it? Irwindale?
Yep. Commerce and us.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to the next session. Next, Whittier Police Department DUI Officer Recognition. I'd like to call upon Whittier Police Captain Aaron Ruiz.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. It's my pleasure to recognize one of our officers this evening, Ezekiel Hernandez. He's been an officer for approximately seven years. Four years with us, he came to us from the Sheriff's Department. But in that time with us, Whittier Police Department, he really has distinguished himself amongst his peers. And most recently, in 2024, he qualified for the 23152 Award, which is given to officers to distinguish themselves in the area of DUI enforcement. And so, in 2024, while patrolling the streets of Santa Fe Springs, Ezekiel made 43 DUI arrests. I think for the total for the year, he made 44. But I can't overstate the importance of that type of enforcement that goes on in our communities. We often say that when you make an arrest, like a DUI, that you conceivably could be saving a life or several lives. I mean, we all have seen the devastation that DUIs do throughout our communities. I know that the city of Santa Fe Springs participates in the Every 15 Minutes program, where it just really brings it close to home for parents and students as to the devastating impact that DUI, driving well-impaired, can have in the community. I'm really proud of this guy. He's currently an FTO, and so he kind of pays it forward. He teaches the newer generation, the importance of DUIs, and I think Santa Fe Springs is really privileged to have him serving down here. I think in my research, I think on average, approximately 11,000 people die annually as a result of DUIs across the nation. The latest statistic I could find was in 2023, where it was over 12,000 DUIs. So, if you think of officers being out there proactive, you know, our partners with CHP here in town, you know, take that very seriously. And, you know, who's to say that you don't prevent a tragedy that's occurring? The final thing that I'm going to just say about Zeke is the impact that he has made in distinguishing himself, his investigations. He was recently selected to be our next detective that will be also serving here in Santa Fe Springs. So, kudos to Zeke and all that he's doing, and I know his future is bright. With that, I'm going to say congratulations again. God bless you and your family. May you be kept safe out there. But I'd also like to introduce and call up Rose Zapata from Mothers Against Drunk Driving for the award presentation.
Good evening, everybody. Happy Tuesday. Excuse me. So, my name is Rose Zapata, Program Specialist for Mothers Against Drunk Driving, and I'm honored and thrilled to be here today. We have a unique opportunity to award and thank an officer for doing something that largely goes unnoticed, which is keeping our roadways safe. Impair driving on our nation's roadway affects everyone, including law enforcement. You see the devastation firsthand all too frequently, and we at MAD applaud you for your commitment. Today, MAD is pleased to award the outstanding work in DUI enforcement. I am here to present an award plaque and the 23152 pin to an officer from the Whittier Police Department. The 23152 pin is significant and symbolizes excellence. The California Vehicle Code section for driving under the influence is 23152, and the pin is red in color to symbolize MAD's mission, which is to end drunk driving, help fight drug driving, support the victims of these violent crimes, and prevent underage drinking. Specifically for peace officers, red is designed to memorialize and honor those officers who had been injured and/or killed in impaired driving collisions. MAD graciously thanks you and the Whittier Police Department for your lifesaving work. Each DUI you have taken off the road is a potential life saved, whether it's the impaired driver themselves or someone else who happens to be sharing the same roadway. I would like to present the 23152 pin and the MAD challenge coin to Whittier Police Officer Ezekiel Hernandez for their 44 DUI arrests made. Thank you for what you do.
Next, Mr. Bobbidiya, are there any changes to the agenda?
We have no changes, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Public comments are now open. The public may address the City Council on any non-public hearing item on the agenda or on any other matter within the council's jurisdiction. You will have an opportunity to speak for three minutes once the city clerk announces your name. City Clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak today?
Yes, Mayor, we have one person wishing to speak, Isabel Cervantes.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. I am representing the Little Lakes Educational Achievement Foundation. We are going to be having a quarter mania, that's the back. And we are going to either auction or raffle this quilt. This is a handmade quilt by me. It's for everyone to take an opportunity to bring home. That is the back, if you could flip it. And that is the front. Go up front and show it. Everyone can participate. We have tickets for sale, and all the money goes back into the district. It goes back to the students directly through the programs that we offer, that we grant. Renee, that would look really good in your office. And I will put a sleeve on it if you win, so it can hang.
All right. I'm in.
Thank you for that. That's absolutely gorgeous. It's very lovely.
Isabel, is it going to be as a raffle or as an auction?
They don't know yet.
We haven't decided yet.
You're going to let him decide?
Well, I can tell you that as part of my guild, my sisters in the guild have informed me that if we do an auction, we could start this at $650 and go on up. That is what we normally do with our auctions that we have every two years. We minimumly start at $600 for our quilts, and we have raised up to $2,000 for one quilt.
Beautiful. Thank you.
So, our Quarter Mania, just in case you guys, is, because that's the part they didn't mention, is September 26th. And it starts at 4:30, and it goes all the way till 10:00. I know that we always get the Aguiris and Nakamoras there, so welcome. And if anybody else is interested, yes. So, and like they said, the money that we raise goes back to the kids. So, Little Lake School District has nine schools, but three of the schools are in Santa Fe Springs. And the biggest middle school is in Santa Fe Springs, too, that we have for... So, you know, the majority of the proceeds that we collect, you know, go to our kids in our community, so we want to make sure that they're taken care of. And, you know, with everything and costs going up, the foundation has just done whatever we can to step up. Last year alone, we were able to give out a little over than $53,000, you know, for grants. So, I think that's the most that we've ever given out. And so, it's a wonderful cause that we just continue to... We just had a golf tournament, Montebello. Our profit was a little over $23,000, just for our profit. I'm hoping that this profit, usually our Quarter Manias are around a little bit over $20,000, so I'm hoping we can make, you know, just around the same amount. So, with our three fundraisers, hopefully, it'll be around $60,000. So, and then from there, we just start looking for the grants to give out to our kids in our community. So, all those who participate, we love to see you there and, you know, love having you there. We have a great time within our community. It's not your normal Quarter Mania. We added adult drinks. Yeah, we allow, a little louder. So, just in case when other people go to Quarter Manias, they're used to ours, and, you know, they're kind of like, hey, what happened? And so, but other than that, it's a great cause. So, thank you, guys. And so, that's why we haven't decided on what we're going to do with, whether to auction it off or, you know, or go from there.
Just on the flyer, it says Thursday, but it's actually on a Friday. Don't forget. The flyer that I received, it says Thursday.
Oh, they did?
Yeah, it says Thursday. It's on a Friday.
All right.
Yeah, it's on a Friday. Yeah, so just so, yeah.
Okay, I will check it out. September 26th. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. City Clerk, are there anyone else wanting to speak?
No other speakers, Mayor.
Okay, public comments are now closed. Staff communications, Mr. Bobbidiya, do we have any staff communications?
Yes, we do, Mayor. We have our Parks and Recs Director, Gus Hernandez.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight, I'm here to invite our community to our first community workshop for the Parks Recreation and Community Services Master Plan. As you're aware, several months ago, we launched the initiative to create a master plan for our recreation system. This is the first community meeting of a series of meetings that we'll be having. This meeting will be Tuesday, September 9th, 2025, here at Town Center Hall, beginning at 6:00 PM. We do have some giveaways, so we invite the entire community to join us at this meeting and provide your feedback on our Parks Recreation and Community Services system. Next, I invite everybody to our first Family Bingo Night, where we're going to be providing education on our upcoming Measure L that will be on the ballot on November 4th. And so, this Bingo Night will be at Town Center Hall, Thursday, September 18th, 5:30 to 7:00 PM. Everything will be free. We are asking to pre-register, just so we know how many people to expect. But we will have, it will be free admission. There'll be prizes for all the winners. We'll have snacks and refreshments, and we invite everybody to go and play bingo. So, once again, that's September 18th.
And Gus, we are looking at a more frequent bingo game, correct?
That's correct. Our city's nonprofit will be doing... Our city's nonprofit will be doing, for right now, monthly bingo nights, beginning in October. This first one will be focused on educating our community on the tax initiative, which is Measure L. After that, we're going to be having monthly bingo's, bingo nights at Town Center Hall that'll raise money for the city's nonprofit, which is Santa Fe Springs Community Programs.
And then the hope is also to make it weekly. St. Pius used to have a bingo on Mondays, and so right now, the freedom of Mondays is one of the biggest days around, so we're hoping to see if they can do that weekly there. And then also, we've noticed that they have this thing called Bingo Local, and it's like a big old party, and we might do that one like on a Friday to raise money. And of course, this money that the nonprofit raises, the city's nonprofit, goes back to the nonprofits that are here in our community. So, or schools, you know, et cetera.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gus.
That's all we got, Mayor.
Thank you. Now we have the City Council Consent Calendar. City Cal, the calendar, we have a total of eight consent items, items five through 12. Is there a motion for approval? There's a motion.
Second.
There's a motion at second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered. Appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. Councilmember Mora?
None tonight.
Councilmember Martin?
None tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
None tonight, thank you.
Mayor Protem Zamora?
Thank you.
And none for me tonight. Council comments, AB 1234, Council Conference Reporting. Councilmember Mora?
Sorry, I missed the potato bake and the art walk. We're at a conference in San Diego. And, you know, we had our first ever city conference, a new member welcome here at City Hall. Hopefully, that's the first of many, but we had a lot of new members join us. Ruin Cutting is alive and well with canes finally opened, and also Dr. Shady, a new dentist here in town. And we're looking forward to Visas Excal on the 17th with a Chamber of Commerce. That is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Martin?
You took like three things off my list already. No, but it was great. We had a, we went on a conference. All, actually, all five of us went to the conference with the chamber, and Mr. Wilson, it was a great chamber. I mean, great event. A lot was discussed, and a lot of stuff came out of there. Positive things came out of there, so I could see us growing closer and expanding chamber. So thank you so much for hosting it. It was a great event. I, the, I'm trying to think, like, today was, went to Raising Cane. It was really good. We actually got up really early to go eat some chicken at 7:30 this morning, but it was really great. It was, it was great. The new, like I said, the new chamber members that we had that event, I think that's the first time we've ever did it, and it was a great, great idea, whoever thought of it. I think that was really good, because the new members got to see the relationship that the city has, and I think it actually made a big difference. Trying to think, Raising Cane, oh, and on Friday with Cindy Jarvis, she had the Palooza. It was a great, great, great event. There was a lot of people. Do we know, like, how much you ended fundraising, or?
Yeah, over $1,500.
That's awesome. So, and it was all for, all for Relay for Life, and it was really good to see the community out there. The pools were all full. It was really good. It was an awesome event. And my last, we're not going to have our council meeting until the 15th or the 16th, I think. A very important date for all of us, we should never forget, September 11th. Please, 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 thank an officer, thank a fireman out there, because if it wasn't for them, we wouldn't have what we have with our safety, and a simple thank you means the world to them. So please, on every day, especially on September 11th, please thank our officers and our firemen, and please let everyone on the department, we thank them, and everybody at Whittier Pity, please, we want you guys to come home every night to your families, and whatever we can do to make sure you guys do that, we're here for you guys. So thank you so much. Go ahead.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Good evening, everyone. I, the chamber, thank you for that workshop. I'm sorry, did I scare you, Mr. Wilson? Thank you so much. That workshop was so positive and so much fun, and it was because of all of you. You're just an amazing group of people, and I want to thank Mark, the president of the chamber. He would, he did an amazing job. After, after the chamber, we were allowed to go to the Dodger game. We had so much fun, and, and it was just an amazing time to bring us all together and to work on our future and to work on our communication and how we're going to make our city more successful than it's ever been. So get ready and join us all, because we're going to take you on a beautiful ride. So I'm just glad that I'm here to enjoy it, yes. And also, yeah, we've missed the potato bake, and we really wanted those potatoes, too, because they're so delicious, but like we said, we were out of town, but I hope you saved us some. Yep. Okay, like that butter and those chives and everything, that was very nice. I wanted to say that I was out of town. I couldn't go to the ribbon cutting this morning. I went to New York, and I, too, remember September 11th, 2001, a day that is embedded in our hearts that we will never forget. I went to the Twin Towers. We paid our respects. We were told to be very compassionate to the people that were there, because you don't know what they've been through. You don't know what family that has affected their lives, so just be very compassionate, very somber when you go there to see that place. And we just said our prayers, and it was just an amazing place. Always wanted to be there, to pay my respects to the people that lost their lives, the men and women and children, and such a historical landmark when you're there and you see the Statue of Liberty. It gives you strength. It makes you so proud to be an American, and just to, just to know that it took place, it was just so hard to believe, but it did happen, and we can't forget that it happened. Yeah, so we, we honor our police, our firefighters, and everybody that, all of our Americans that are here. We are so proud to be in a country, the land of the free, the people that we are, and we are, I think we are the greatest United States of America, yes. And also, my grandson moved to New York after he graduated from college, so we went to go visit him, and he showed me a picture of himself, I think it was about, he went to Lake Center Middle School. He was about 13. He showed me a picture, and he was in front of the Statue of Liberty. And I said, you know, what made you decide to move to New York? And he said it was that Washington DC trip that our LEAF contributes to and gives back to the children so that they can go. So LEAF, Mayor Protem Zamora, ladies of the LEAF program, and everybody that contributes, I want to thank you for giving my grandson the inspiration to graduate from college and go to New York and, and be a success, and, and then bring me over there so that I can see the history of that great state. So I just want to thank you for that. We had a great time, and that's why I wasn't there, but, you know, our city is just moving forward so fast and so successfully. I want to thank everybody for all your efforts. We're not going to slow down. We're going to move forward. So like I said, enjoy the ride, because here we come. So thank you, have a great evening.
Thank you, Annette. Mayor Protem Zamora?
Quarter mania, once again, September 26th, Friday, the art walk. It was actually great. You know, the staff involved, you know, the, we, we, coming home from the conference, and it's raining over here, and the staff are just running around, like, you know, trying to figure out places to dry up, and, you know, it was just amazing to see all hands on deck, and, and, you know, you see the staff when, you know, I show up, and, you know, it's, it's easy for us, we show up, and, and we look like rock stars, and, you know, we're all dry and stuff like that, and they're all wet. You look at their hair, and I'm like, hey, what's wrong with your hair? And they're like, it was raining. And I was like, oh, well, San Diego, it wasn't, you know, so, you know, it's, so just kudos to the staff, you know, the fact that everybody puts their heart in, and, you know, just to have this event, and it was just such, such a huge success to see all these kids over there. And they get to run around, roll around in the grass, and just, you know, draw and, you know, make a mess out of themselves, because technically, they're all dirty afterwards, and, but just the, what they create and just the imagination of what God has, God has, you know, allowed them to do. And also, the conference itself, you know, we, it was great, because it's the first time that I think we ever had our, our Police Services Director ever speak at, at any of our workshops. So Arlene, those of you, if you guys ever have questions or concerns, whether it be within our schools, or, Arlene is just a remarkable person. When you call upon her, even Captain Reese, if you guys, you know, Aaron Reese, I know you just coughed right now and walked out, I'm sorry. Bad timing on you, but other than that, they're just great to call upon if you need anything, whether it be some kind of, you want to host something at your schools, you ever want them to talk to you guys or, or have some kind of conversation where they can talk to the parents, even our CHP, everybody wants to be able to communicate and tell you what we have here in our community. How, you know, we, sometimes you have members just being afraid, you know, or sometimes they just have questions of what the new laws are, and, and these guys are great people to have, so if you guys ever want to host an event, I would highly recommend it. You know, Julio spoke about, spoke about our numbers and where we're at, and, and, you know, letting us know things we can do. Renee brought up about, you know, the big five that we're creating, which is five cities, including ourselves, that mimic who we are. And the reason why we're doing it is because we used to always have lobbyists, and we paid these lobbyists, and, you know, I'm not saying that we didn't get anything out of it, but when you're a city that only has 18,000 residents, you're not really being heard, you know? Everybody wants to take our money, because financially, when it comes to taxes, everybody wants the tax. Everybody wants to take that money out of Santa Fe Springs, and we're always trying to keep that money in Santa Fe Springs. So, you know, we learned a lot of different things. I did have a chance to go to the Raising Cane today. Woke up early, chicken for breakfast, it was amazing. Went to the Santa Fe-St. Paul game. Both teams just, you know, played a team that was actually just a lot, lot better. So it was a great to see the game, you know, but of course, through adversity, our kids will learn, and, you know, September 11th, and, you know, like, like the lady set up here that, you know, never forget, you know, we, we know, most of us still know where we were at when that was taking place, and I still remember watching the TV and thinking it was all fake, and, and, you know, I thought it was AI before it was AI, because you're just, how can this be happening to this great nation? And you know what? Things like this can happen at any time. So September 11th, also, for those of you who are waiting for your Heritage Arts Grant checks, you guys should be receiving them September 11th, right? Marisela, you gave me the wave, so Little Lakes Schools District, Santa Fe Springs Christian School, and whoever else receives these grants, so you can, guys can start telling your people September 11th. Nayarit. I was able to go to an, to an event that these are, so when you say Nayarit, imagine that the town is, is like the city of Santa Fe Springs, but they call it Nayarit. It's like considered the state, but the town would actually be like the city. And it was a family reunification, and it was through Ahua, who we partnered through to do the Fiesta de Octubre, and 32 families got to be reunited. It was, it was wholesome, but it was sad. It was, I mean, after the first one, I was like looking at them, how many more do we have? And they're like, I still got 31 more. And imagine not being able to ever see, and, and it's done through grandparents and parents, so what Nayarit, what these individuals do, they set up people to go and help you process your paperwork so you can get a visa and come see your family. It's a 10-year visa, but the trip itself is only for three weeks. And everything is done, and then after that, they get, they keep their visa for 10 years as long as they do everything above board that they're supposed to do. And it, it's, it was amazing, because some of these people have never seen their kids, their grandkids in over 20 years, 25 years, 30 years. I mean, it was a private event, but I, I know that at one point, they were calling out names, so they do it one by one, and you have this young girl who's probably in her 20s, and she's looking for her grandparents, but she doesn't know what they look like. And they had to call the names for them to see each other, but once they fell in each other's arms, they were just crying, crying. They were kissing her like they, you know, like as if they won the Super Bowl, and, and, you know, it was just real pleasant to see that, you know, everything's, everything's possible when you have God in, in your life. So it was just great to see, and I'm glad that I was there to see that, and, and, you know, and I hope to see some more. They said they start the process in September, and it's about a year, year and a half process for them to get the proper paperwork and to make sure people get reunited with their family. So, and we played kind of the role of the host area. They come into LAX, come into our city. From our city, some, some of them left to Tulsa, Oklahoma, some of them left to Nebraska, some of them left out of state somewhere else to go meet their families. Some families came in from San Diego, Arizona, they drove in, so it was just really great to see. So other than that, just may God always bless the city of Santa Fe Springs, and may God always bless the United States of America.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. As we always say, I'm very proud of my council, the four members up here, and I'm very proud being mayor this year. We, we've been, we've come a long way, and we're moving forward, and they've already said it all. I attended the Raising Cane, the conference, the different events, and you can tell, we're very busy as a council up here, very busy. It's not just the council meeting that we're doing, but I'm proud of my fellow council members, the staff, the city, the residents, everything that everybody does in this city. So I'm not going to go over everything that's already been said. I just agree with every word that was said, but I do have to compliment John. I had a, one of the first business owners in Santa Fe Springs sitting next to me at your, and he said that that, the presentations that were done, especially by the city manager, was probably one of the best, if not the best, one he's ever heard. So you got to give, I give the staff all the credit for that in the world. And as you notice, you know, we're still casual. Well, summer's coming to a close, so next meeting, September 16th, will be the last casual night, and I'm, I'm, I want to make it a Hawaiian theme that night, okay? We'll end the summer and come into the fall after that. So everybody, you got a two-week notice, Hawaiian theme, all right? And, and also, one other thing, today's a very special day. We have a birthday person on, on the council right now, so.
We were baking, we were baking it in the back.
We're, oh, they've been baking it in the back. If everyone could please join me and sing a happy birthday to John.
Let's start it.
Ready? One, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear John. Happy birthday to you.
And I guess staff knows that John prefers pie over cake, so there's a pie up here for him. So congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And I appreciate for still remembering so many years ago. But yeah, I prefer pie, but thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
So at this time, I'd like to adjourn this meeting in memory of Roberta Garcia, mother of Pico Rivera Mayor John Garcia. Meeting adjourned.